At this time, I'll call our meeting to order. We welcome everyone tonight again under another circumstance of being during this time, but we have with us this evening Pastor Ellen McCovey. She's the pastor at Hope Mills United Methodist Church. And at this time she's going to lead the invocation.
Let us pray. Well, Holy God, in this time we call pandemic. We give you thanks that you're not freaked out by this. We give you thanks for the leadership that you have put in place prior to any understanding of a pandemic coming. We give you thanks for the town we live in and the country we live in. We give you thanks, Lord, that we as a community can pull together to be the community we need to be, helping one another, be in your hands and your voice of calm. We pray for tonight's meeting, Lord, that the work you need done will be done, that there will be discussions and agreement and consensus, that there will be guidance as some parts of the state and the country are opening up again, that our leadership will be able to make the best decision they can based on the information at hand. Lord, I pray for peace and calm and safety for all these leaders that you've brought into our lives and especially the leaders that are on this Zoom call. For, Lord, you have used them in powerful ways to maintain calm and to take care of our town. So we pray for your wisdom, your knowledge, and your peace to descend on them and stay with them now and always. Amen.
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 And I have another meeting, so God bless you and thank you for what each of you is doing. These are tough times, but you're leading very, very well. And as one of your citizens, I appreciate it.
I would like to thank you for taking your time to join us.
My pleasure.
Praise the Lord is good.
At this time, we have our pledge of allegiance. If you will join with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve our agenda?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to-
That's a motion from May 4th.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards has made the motion. Commissioner Legg made the second. At this time, I'll do a roll call. So we've got Mayor Pro Tim McCray. Mayor Pro Tim McCray, do you approve? Yes, for the agenda?
I don't see her. She may have lost her signal, as she mentioned a few minutes ago.
Okay. So do I have Commissioner Marley?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
Uh, yes.
And Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
And Commissioner Legg?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. At this time, you'll have to bear with me. We do have a lot of presentations. I'm going to try to make them, I'm going to do my best to not make them as long as they really are, but I am going to take the time because these are important proclamations. The first proclamation is the Older Americans Month, May 2020. Whereas Hope Mills includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences. And whereas Hope Mills is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society. Whereas Hope Mills can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults and community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. I hereby proclaim May 2020 to be Older Americans Month in Hope Mills. The next proclamation that I have is a proclamation for the National Day of Prayer. Pray God's glory across the earth. And it's May 7, 2020. And I will say that this is the first time since I've been mayor that under the circumstances, we ask that everyone please pray at home at noon. But the proclamation reads, whereas the National Day of Prayer was created in 1952 by a joint resolution of Congress and signed into law by President Harry S Truman. In 1988, the law was unanimously amended to designate the first Thursday of May as a day of national prayer. The National Day of Prayer has great significance for us as a nation and enables us to recall the way in which our founding fathers sought the wisdom of God when faced with critical decisions. The National Day of Prayer has become a national annual observance which belongs to all Americans as a day that transcends different cultures and brings together all citizens from all backgrounds. Our hope is that individuals, churches, and spiritual leaders in America will humble ourselves and unify prevailing prayer for the great move of God in America. The theme for the 2020 National Day of Prayer is Pray God's Glory Across the Earth, which reminds us that this promise for the earth will be filled with the knowledge of the glory of the Lord as the waters cover the sea is for us today. I proclaim May 7, 2020, as National Day of Prayer in the town of Hope Mills. And I urge all citizens to observe this day by joining members of all faiths and creeds and seeking divine guidance for ourselves, our leaders, and our country. And I also want to thank our pastors' coalition for all they do for Hope Mills and know that I'm sure they're just as sad as I am that we do not be or cannot hold this at our normal time, at our normal place. The next is the proclamation for the 51st Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And it's May 3 through May 9, so we're actually in that time right now. The Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. The Office of Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. The Office of Professional Municipal Clerk provides professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of the governments of other levels. Professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful for the neutrality and partiality rendering equal service to all. We're very fortunate to have our Professional Municipal Clerk, Jane Starling, that does so much for our town. And she's also currently the new secretary of the mayor's coalition. So we appreciate everything you do, Jane, and just know that we celebrate you this week along with the assistant that helps you, Tiffany, because the two of you help us a great deal and help, I'm sure, making sure the town runs smoothly. Next, we have proclamation, the National Police Week. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. Currently, tens of thousands of law enforcement officers from around the world participate in events which honor those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice. The members of the law enforcement agencies of North Carolina play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedom of the citizens of our state. It is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of law enforcement officers and agencies. The citizens of Hope Mills recognize and appreciate the contributions made by law enforcement officers at all levels of the government. I proclaim May 10 through 16 as National Police Week in Hope Mills and hope that you will join me in recognizing things our great police force does. National Public Works Week proclamation is made for, the week is May 17 through 23. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services for the importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the town of Hope Mills. These infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. We're responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. It is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders and children in the town of Hope Mills to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. The year 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And I hereby designate the week of May 17 through 23 as National Public Works Week in Hope Mills. I not only encourage all citizens to be thankful for our public work staff, but just know that without them, this past month or longer, I don't know what we would do because they've maintained and they've come to work and been boots on the ground the entire time. That concludes my presentations, but with my proclamations. But now we have a presentation at this time. It's the manager's recommended proposed 2021 budget. And we do have our budget books before us. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Adams.
Alrighty. Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor and members of the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners, I'm going to read my budget message. And then following that, if we could hold off any discussion or questions, we'll discuss holding our budget workshop in May. You have a May calendar in your packet as well as June calendar for the setting of the public hearing. So following my message, I would just ask that you all make a motion to set a budget workshop or workshops and then schedule the public hearing. So I'll now go into reading my message for fiscal year 2020 and 2021 budget message. The town of Hope Mills continues to be a great place to live as the town strives to maintain a positive balance of commercial and residential growth that enhances the town's ability to improve services provided to its citizens and the further investment in the town's future through careful and strategic planning, funding, and scheduling of capital projects, beneficial partnerships that provide opportunities for funding of improvements, innovation in developing the town's identity, and promoting the highest standards for our citizens. In accordance with the requirements of the North Carolina general statutes, I hereby submit the proposed budget for fiscal year July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021 for the town of Hope Mills. The proposed budget is designed to keep the town on a course to meet its objectives during the next fiscal year. Highlights of the proposed fiscal year 2020-2021 budget are as follows. Revenues from the general fund. Ad valorem taxes. $5,680,000 estimate is based on a 99.43 collection rate with an approximate tax base of $1,787,375, keeping the existing tax rate of 0.46 cents per $100 of valuation. If you recall, at the budget retreat, we discussed adding $5 to the motor vehicle license fee. We have added the $5 to the motor vehicle license fee, making it a total of $10, increasing it from $60,000 to $120,000. Those funds are to be used strictly for the street department. The recreation tax is $601,000 estimate is based on the existing rate of $0.05 per $100 of valuation multiplied by the value of $0.01 of tax amount, which equals $120,223. The solid waste fees are $1,355,350 estimate is based on the new increased rate of $20.30 per month or $243.60 per year. Previously, it was $20 per month, which is an addition of $0.30 per month. The new solid waste fees include garbage at $10.60, recycling at $6.60, and yard waste at $3.10. State shared revenues. The state shared revenues are estimated based primarily on previous year's distributions. The largest receipts from the state are sales tax and utility franchise tax. These have been budgeted at $3,654,000 and $900,000 respectively. Fund balance. $580,000 of unreserved, undesignated fund balance is recommended for this budget. Now I'll go over expenditures in the general fund. Capital outlay. All capital items have been appropriated and a list has been provided for each department's request for your review in the capital outlay section of this proposed budget. Personnel. There are two new positions that are recommended in this budget. One is the construction manager in public works and one in Parks and Rec Athletics and Programs Assistant Supervisor. Cost of living adjustment. The budget reflects a cost of living adjustment or a COLA of 1.5%. These amounts are based on information from the North Carolina League of Municipalities for the current and upcoming year. Employee benefits. Employee health insurance has been budgeted with a 2.9% decrease. Vision, dental, AD&amp;D, short-term disability, and life insurance did not increase. The budget also includes a 5% 401K contribution and 5% for law enforcement officers. In addition, it includes state-mandated retirement of 10.5% and 10.9% for law enforcement officers.
Hey Melissa, I hate to interrupt. That is a typo in there, so 2.9% increase.
Oh, not a decrease. Okay.
It says decrease, but that is wrong. It should say 2.9% increase.
Increase, okay. All right. And then it also includes a longevity bonus. Debt service. All debt service requirements have been appropriated in this budget to meet our debt obligations. The new public safety facility project. This proposed budget does not include funding for ongoing programming and design for a new public safety center. The public safety facility has a separate capital project fund showing all revenues and expenditures related to the project. New vehicles. The proposed budget includes the purchase of three new police vehicles, two F-150 trucks for the public works department, a Dodge Ran 4x4 rescue vehicle for the fire department, a new inspections vehicle, and a new transit passenger van for the Parks and Recreation Department. All new vehicles are recommended for replacement of existing vehicles by the fleet maintenance department. An installment financing loan is recommended for the purchases of all these vehicles for a total of $323,000. Now I'll discuss revenues in the PAL bill fund. State distribution is $425,000, which is an estimate based on previous year's distributions. We have not appropriated any fund balance from the PAL bill fund. Expenditures in the PAL bill fund. Capital is $50,000. Has been budgeted for a new dump truck to be shared with the stormwater fund. All debt service requirements have been appropriated in this budget to meet our debt obligations. Revenues in the stormwater fund. $738,175 is an estimate based on county's residential and commercial parcel information. We have not appropriated any funds from stormwater fund balance. Stormwater expenditures. Capital is $50,000 for a new dump truck to be shared with the PAL bill fund and $90,000 for a new rear-load trash truck for yard waste to be shared with sanitation. All debt service requirements have been appropriated in this budget to meet our debt obligations. As we proceed into the next several years, we will continue to evaluate projects and personnel needs as they relate to the provision of services. Under current circumstances, we are cautiously optimistic that things will return to normal as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have several projects which will be initiated during this fiscal year. Therefore, it will be important to prioritize programming needs with future budgets. We will continue to work with town commissioners, staff, and citizens to establish our goals and objectives as the town grows to provide the level of service expected. Town staff has been instrumental in the development of this document, and I commend them for their hard work in submitting requests that control costs while providing service levels expected by the town commissioners, management, and our citizens. I would like to say a special thank you to our department heads and especially the finance director for their time and effort in the preparation of this document. Without their help, this budget could not have developed to address both the present and future service needs. This budget reflects my recommendations based on department meetings, evaluation of existing service needs, and input from the town commissioners. The fiscal year 2020-2021 budget represents a level of funding that will allow the town to maintain and, when possible, improve current service levels while making organizational changes to provide the best possible programs for our citizens. It is important to note that with any budget, external forces can affect these projections. And it is for that reason that the figures proposed are a conservative forecast of our revenues and expenditures for the next year. Please review the information. And should you have any questions, please feel free to email me and we'll discuss at our proposed budget workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. At this time, we need to try to set a date for a workshop and then maybe set a date for a public hearing. Are we going to try to do the workshop on Zoom? Are we going to try to come in to do it? Have you thought about that?
Madam Mayor, I believe that our next meeting, our next regular meeting, because we are scheduling two public hearings this evening for, further down the agenda, annexations. I believe we can probably do a combination like we're going to do with that, when we can do an in-person and have some of the members on Zoom for our budget workshop. I believe we could try to do that. Or if you all would like to, we can try to do strictly a Zoom meeting. It's completely up to the board and what your thoughts and feelings are on that.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
How about May 18, starting at 5:00?
And have a Zoom.
Yeah. We'll kick it off on May 18, starting at 5:00.
What's the thoughts with the other commissioners? Do you have any thoughts on that, or is that going to work?
May morning.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that the Zoom is good enough. But I think considering it's going to be on the budget and everything, I think some of us should be, actually be there discussing it. And if some of them want to stay on Zoom, they can. But I think this is very important right now, and it needs to be discussed. And if we stay six feet from each other, I know we had that one meeting and, you know, everybody got along fine there. But if we could set up a meeting for us and still stay six feet apart, I think that would work out good, too. But this would be a very, very important meeting.
I agree with you, Commissioner Edwards.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We don't have to sit up on the podium where we always sit. We could set chairs around the front of the podium and spread out more. And I know we'd have to have a limited number of visitors that would also have to be separated. And we could do that, but just not put a chair there.
So are we thinking to make that May 18 meeting the workshop and then just continue the regular meeting in that manner? Or I guess need to ask Ms. Starling for, is it, would it be possible to video it and to set the microphones up so it could be done? So it could be, people could hear it, public could hear it?
I'm sure there's a way to do that. Just have to do a little research and...
If I may, my recommendation possibly would be to have a quorum at the meeting and the other members on Zoom. And then if anyone wishes to speak during public comment, we can bring them in individually.
I think Marco has some cordless mics, microphones in person that maybe we could utilize if we needed to.
Right.
And how would we decide who would come in?
Well, my, again, just my recommendation, I think that might be prudent to let the oldest members, perhaps, stay on the... I'm not being prejudiced, but I'm just trying to look out for your safety.
Yeah.
So seniority would be... Right. Yeah.
What's your thought, Mr. Hurtuck?
I think we can certainly have a remote hearing as long as we have ability for the public to speak during the public comment section. If you want to limit the number of people who can attend in person, you can certainly do that. I don't know that we can choose. It may have to just be first come, first served as to who gets in. But then during the public comment section, we can just say, okay, you know, one person at a time at the mic. And then once they have spoken, maybe let them leave and let someone else come in. We can limit the number of people. I think as long as we do it in a, that's fine. And everyone who wants to get a chance to speak can.
I think we all have a place set aside for the press. So when they want to, they'll have a place guaranteed to them.
Yeah.
Melissa, can I mention something?
Yes.
We usually don't have public comment at the budget workshop. We have where the public can attend, but that's not where they have comments.
Right. It's the public hearing.
Public hearing is at the actual council meeting. And usually we do it at the June meeting. In the past, we've done it at the same meeting of the night that we've approved it in June.
Right.
That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah.
You could do the budget workshop at 5:00 without any necessarily public hearing.
Right.
And then when you present it at the meeting, whether it be by Zoom or in person, as long as we have the same setup that we have now, where people can sign up for a public comment,
Right.
email in comments, or some avenue for everyone who wants to weigh in to weigh in.
So would you want, if we're looking at May 18 for the workshop and then June 1 for the hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's my recommendation would be.
Are you going, we want to set that June 1 hearing as the, at 5:00 or 6:00? Or go ahead and let it be at the beginning of the meeting at 7:00?
Normally, we've done it at 7:00 in the past.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, 7:00.
Yeah.
So if we did our hearing at 7:00 PM on June 1, and if we're still... So if we did our hearing at 7:00 PM on June 1st, and if we're still in the, if we're still in the same scenario now, we can do public comments and participation like we've done, in other words, they can email in questions or concerns. Or if we go with May 18th for the workshop, then we do the workshop at 5:00? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah. Yes.
Workshop at 5:00. My question would be, are we still going to be, if we have some in and some out, are we still going to use Zoom so that everybody will be a part of it? So we'll have those of you that are, like, let's say if I'm there, then the people that aren't there are going to have, we're still going to have to use Zoom so we can have that conversations with all of us?
Correct. That was the plan, and Jane and I haven't quite worked out all of those details yet, but...
Okay.
This is a, you know, ever-evolving situation, so, and if we see that it's not going to work, we'll let you all know, and then we'll just have everybody there, but...
Okay. All right. So then, is it in agreement that we would have 5:00 PM workshop on May 18th? Details to be worked out, and then our public hearing will be on June 1st at 7:00? And again, same scenario, details have to be worked out as far as how we'll be doing those meetings. Do I need a motion to do that?
I'll make that a motion if you need it, Mayor.
Okay, so I have a motion.
That's the public hearing we do, yes.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Bellflowers, that we have those two timeframes, one at 5:00 PM workshop on the 18th, hearing on June 1st. I have the second is...
Second.
Commissioner Leggs, second's that. All right, let's do a roll call vote. Did Mayor Pro Tim McCray get back with us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Marley?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Legg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
Yes.
It's a 5-0, and so we have set our workshop at 5:00 PM on May 18th, and our hearing for the public on June 1st at 7:00 PM. Okay? Thank you very much. Next, public comments. Ms. Starling, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have one public comment. Susan Moody from 3647 Lake Forest Road, Hope Mills, North Carolina, 28348, and I quote, "I want to know why Lake Park was closed and walking trails were left open. I respectfully request that the Lake Park be reopened with the same restrictions as the other parks. Current information shows that sunshine and fresh air is a good thing. If you decide not to reopen Lake Park, please provide the supporting data for your decision." End part.
Thank you. And as always with our public comments, we'll give that to the staff to respond to.
Respectfully, Madam Mayor, I have already responded to her, so...
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. At this time, is there anything from our consent agenda that you would like to move to new business? If not, do we have a motion to approve our consent agenda that's before you?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Commissioner Edwards. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mayor Pro Tim McCray. Okay, let's do our roll call vote. Commissioner Legg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Marley?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim McCray?
Yes.
That will be a 5-0, and so the consent agenda is approved as it is before you. Now, we have new business, and we have the consideration and possible adoption of Resolution 2020-08 to amend the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners' 2020 meeting schedule, and that's behind Tab 13, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Adams, I assume, right?
Madam Mayor, this is just to allow for the, to be consistent with the rules of procedure that we are allowing by electronic means, and may limit public attendance while allowing live streaming and limited access to public hearings as social distancing guidelines provided by the Governor's Office may require.
Okay.
No change to the schedule as far as dates-wise.
It's adding Zoom tech possibility.
And just to clarify, this is so we don't have to issue a statement or, you know, a notice that we're meeting that it's going to be a Zoom meeting. So until such time, able to meet again in person, this will be sort of the standing rule that we're Zoom meetings without further notice.
All right. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
What a motion? Me?
Okay, I have a motion to adopt the Resolution 2020-08 to amend the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners' 2020 meeting schedule. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim McCray? Okay, we'll do our roll call vote. Commissioner Legg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Marley?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim McCray?
Yes.
Thank you much. Next, we have consideration and possible adoption of Resolution 2020-09 to set a public hearing date of May 18th, 2020, for annexation number 2020-02.
We're going to have to do that by Zoom as well?
Madam Mayor, I'll address this. We were planning on doing, trying to do a combination, Zoom and in-person meeting for the public hearing, so, but we'll try to work out all the details, and if we see that we can't do that, we'll consult with the attorney on the best way to move forward with it.
Okay, and so this would be at our May 18th meeting, which we would already by that time know how we're setting it up, so it would be...
Correct.
In other words, it will do it, whichever means we have to make it be legal.
Correct.
Okay.
And also, I'll just let you all know that I reached out to the county last week in regards to Planning Board and public hearings, and I let them know my feelings about it, that, you know, I totally understand, you know, under the current situations, that, you know, they've had to cancel the in-person meetings, but I also let them know that we were trying to be innovative in how we were going to be moving forward with our public hearings, and that everything couldn't come to a complete stop for, you know, months and months, and that I expected that, you know, these public hearings that we have on the hopper that are waiting, we have three that we're waiting for the Planning Board to hear and then move forward with us, that I expected that sometime in the near future that they figure out a way to hold those public hearings. And so, I had Chance to reach out to them today, and they have canceled their Planning Board meeting for May, but the one scheduled for June 16th is on schedule, so they have not, and currently, they don't have any plans to cancel that. That being said, these two annexation requests that we're looking at setting our public hearings for May 18th, those initial zoning requests will not be able to be on that June 16th meeting. It's only going to be items that have been held up. But if you all approve tonight that we go ahead and initiate the initial zoning process with the county, staff can contact them tomorrow, and we can get it going as soon as possible. Look at possibly July Planning Board public hearing and coming to you all in August. So I just wanted to let you all know that we've been having that conversation, and it's, you know, again, an ever-evolving situation that changes, so, but that's where we are.
Okay, so with the Board, these, again, these would fall, these two would fall under the whatever method we were using at that time, and would, again, would make both of these hearings, do the best we can to have these hearings get public input as needed. So do we have, do I have a motion to set the, this time up for May 18th?
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Dan, can we cover both of these under one motion?
I don't see why you couldn't.
Okay, then I will make a motion that we do the motion 2020-09 and case number 2020-03, set the public hearing on May 18th at 7:00 PM.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the Resolution 2020-09 for annexation number 2020-02, and the, adopt the Resolution 2020-10 for annexation number 2020-03, for this to be, the hearing to be on May 18th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Do our roll call. Mayor Pro Tim McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Marley?
Yes.
Commissioner Legg?
Yes.
And Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you much. Next, we'll do our consideration and possible action regarding the bids for a driveway and parking lot for the former golf course property. This project is currently unfunded. This project is behind Tab 16, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Adams. Who would be responsible?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I sent out, had Jane send out some information for you all today, that in the hopes that it would, you know, clarify any questions. The previous Board back February 2019, and also, yeah, February 2019, made a motion to have me negotiate and execute a contract to engage an engineer, and also have a survey conducted with a cap of $25,000. And then, the information that we sent out today was that the total for the survey, which, by the way, included the entire golf course property, not just the area for the driveway, we needed to have the entire golf course surveyed. That was $10,500, and then the total engineering and the NCDOT driveway application was $7,550. So we came in under the $25,000 cap. In addition to that, we did not have to have a budget amendment for either one of those as Drew was able to find funds in the current budget. What we're looking at is three bids that were received, and there is a difference between the lowest and the two higher bids. So we had our representative verify that that low bid that was received was correct, and there was nothing missing, and it is their recommendation, our representative's recommendation, that we accept that low bid in the amount of $36,814.75. The other two bids were $65,800 and $67,193.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank Mr. Siskel and Bruce for meeting some of us over there today to clear up some questions.
Yeah.
That I had, and I'm glad we had that meeting. I found out a lot about what really is going to happen over there than what we thought was going to happen, and it seems to all be to our advantage that we met there today. With that being said, if no one else has any questions, I'll make a recommendation that we approve the contract for $36,814.75 to Diamond Construction Company and Mr. Darrell Bowman.
Second.
Ma'am.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Do I have any discussion?
May 1 morning.
Yes.
I would like to ask one question. The gentleman that we let us rent the parking lot from before, who contacted him and what was his reply about going ahead and setting up a second contract?
I believe, Commissioner Bellflowers, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that was members of the previous Board that worked that out. It was Mayor Pro Tim at the time, Mitchell, and my understanding was that they were not going to be interested in renewing a lease for a second year. The lease is up in September.
Correct.
Yes.
Has anybody contacted him since then?
No.
Newly?
No.
Now, he was, Commissioner Edwards, he was very adamant about just a one-year lease just for the parking lot, and that was it. Very adamant, no, he wasn't interested in a renewal at that time, and I don't think that's changed. I mean, I haven't talked to him, but...
Has anybody from the new Board hasn't talked to him?
I think he made it pretty clear last year that, he didn't want to do it last year, or this year, I should say, but he did. He made it pretty clear that I don't think he wanted to go any further. They have development plans there, because that property that belonged to the YMCA next to them has since sold, and I think they're going to want to put condos or something back in there.
Madam Mayor, I mean, it was his understanding that he only approved the one-year lease to open the door for a temporary parking lot, which is where, which is the point that we're at now. Even if we were to consider renewing, I mean, that's just lease money. Here, we can go ahead and invest in the parking lot that the town owns outright.
I agree.
I do have another question. I'm sorry, Ms. Pat.
You go right ahead.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim?
We still have to pay for this out of $36,000 out of general fund, right, Melissa? You muted.
Hi, sorry, thought I had unmuted. I'm going to have to look to see, you know, it's possible, we may not have to use the whole entire amount as a budget amendment, but more than likely, we would need to bring some sort of a budget amendment back to you all.
Yeah.
But I will say, and I think I've talked to each and every one of you about, you know, about this project, if we do plan on developing the Golf View Greenway, whether it be in the near future or the distant future, we're still going to have to have a driveway and a parking lot.
Yeah.
And this will become a permanent. It's not temporary that will just go away. It will become a permanent, and I don't believe that we are going to ever get a better bid.
Yeah.
So it probably, if we don't do it now, and I've talked to Drew, you know, about the funds and, you know, how it's going to affect us, and in the scheme of things, it's not going to make or break us. If we don't do it now, we're going to end up paying double, triple, or maybe even more than triple for it in the long run, and this will allow us to continue to keep the walking trail open, and, you know, I've heard that there are lots of people using it, so I would hate... So I would hate to see it go away for five years until we're ready to do the master plan out there, or 10 years, whatever it may be. I don't, I don't know. But I, I, I think that we should go ahead, my recommendation is to go ahead and do it.
And you know, Melissa, oh, Madam Mayor, you know, to further that, you know, in the conceptual plan from McAdams, I mean, Rachel is aware of what we're doing and, and of course, she can adjust any plan that she has for the golf course to incorporate, you know, the, the parking lot that we're putting in. So that's not, that, that, that's an easy fix on her end as well.
Correct.
The only, the only thing that comment that I have, and of course, I've shared this with Mr. Cisco, um, I did have, and I know that Chancellor has probably gotten some information too, there's been several residents of Golf View and one from Brightmore that wanted us to make it a more walkable situation where you would have access from all those neighborhoods. In fact, the most recent gentleman that called me said that if we looked at the number of people that live in Golf View that could walk there if we had a walkway, that he did not like the fact that we were spending money for a parking lot for people that lived outside of Hope Mills to come and use our golf course, which is what they have seen by living there, that a lot of the people that are attending that walk-in area are people that are non-residents and that don't pay taxes. So that was the only thing that's been brought to my attention is the fact that we don't have easy access from the neighborhood, even if there was a sidewalk that went from, um, that area up to, um, to the, the Golf View Greenway. They're just, that's been their concern. And they're also concerned naturally about the development that's getting ready to take place, which is encroaching then more on their neighborhood and that's why they're, they're looking for greenways, places they can go to. That's the only thing I have, have had, and I did forward that information to, uh, different people as far as what their comments were.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Legg?
The thing about it is, we, if we do our own parking lot driveway, even temporary, that will serve us in a number of different ways. When the final plan is done and we put a driveway somewhere else, this could still be used as a in-out or a quick fix. And I think Lamarcos would probably like to pitch in on that, but, uh, I talked to Mr. Bellflowers about it today. And there's so many different ways that we could use that temporary driveway in the future. And from what Don and Bruce showed us today, it's not going to affect with us in any way, shape, or form a future development, uh, of recreation areas, uh, in that, in that golf course area. And I, I agree that they, they do need, um, a walkway from Golf Acres over in there, but unless there's an easement, we're blocked off there now because that property has been sold as well. But that doesn't keep us from putting a sidewalk down inside of Golf View, though.
Okay.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am?
Um, I, I am not opposed to them doing the, the parking lot or anything like that, but there's things that's come up since we, it was discussed last year and voted on, um, that we didn't foresee, and that's the COVID-19. And, um, we don't know what, how it's going to affect Hope Mills. I mean, we know it's already affected us and we know that the revenue coming in is going to be different this year than it was last year. I'm not worried so much about what we do over at the golf course as much as I am our taxpayers and the town itself, because we will be losing revenue and I don't want us to, um, and we don't know what's going to happen. It could be two months or it could be another year. I just don't want to be put in a situation where we would have to raise taxes or go in other areas or have to, to not do what we've already got planned. I mean, we've already got the, um, the church and the museum and Heritage Park and a couple other areas, a parking lot, and we haven't completed anything yet. And I, I, if we're going to spend the money, we want to at least complete something, but I suggest that we hold off and, um, see what this COVID-19 is going to do to the town.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Legg?
I think the finance director has addressed that along with Ms. Adams. And obviously, we have, uh, have this covered if we need it to be covered. And I would ask for a vote on my motion, please.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, at this time, we'll do our roll call. Mayor Pro Tim McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
No.
Commissioner Marley?
Yes.
Commissioner Legg?
Yes.
Be it 4-1 in favor of moving forward with the golf course driveway. Next, next on our list is the manager's report. And Ms. Adams?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have, um, a couple of items to add. First off, I'll do a brief, am I, am I not, I'm not muted, am I? Okay. I'll do a brief update on the COVID-19 and how it relates to our town operations. Moving forward, um, with, uh, the town hall, uh, I am not recommending any changes at this time to our operating procedures. Parks and Rec, I'm not recommending any changes at this time. Uh, the Parks and Rec Center will remain closed. The opening of the playground equipment will be dependent upon the data coming in from the governor's office as it relates to the progression of the COVID-19. The lake park will remain closed at this time. We will continue to monitor and reassess the situation weekly. And additionally, I have one other item. Okay, sorry. So, uh, uh, an update regarding the previous case, case, case 18-020 at 3121 North Main Street, which was the car dealership. At the April 20th, um, meeting, the board approved a request for the vehicle repair in the rear of this establishment, but noted that it was currently operating in violation of its original approval in September of 2019, which approved a vehicle display area in the rear. Staff sent a notice of violation on April 23rd, 2020, that displaying the vehicles in front was a violation of his original approval and that his recent approval on April 20th would be conditioned on bringing the issues into compliance. The business owner responded to the violation notice indicating that he would be applying for another site plan approval to allow for the vehicles to be displayed in the front as it will be more beneficial to the operation of his business. Staff will keep the board updated on when this new application is filed and what the hearing date will be scheduled for consideration by our board. And that is all that I have for my manager's update.
Does anyone have any questions in reference to the manager's update?
Ma'am?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Legg?
Ms. Adams, this work is to be done along the sidewalks, uh, with the ADA transaction.
The repairs on Main Street?
Is that what that is? Is that?
Yes, sir.
That was a bridge to break in the sidewalk?
That, that's, uh, to repair, um, is that are in front of the, um, the church, um, running from Dr. Rayner's office down to the corner. And then also on the other side, there's some repairs that need to be, on the opposite side, some repairs that need to be made.
Around the parish house, what's the, what's the reason we have to change it there?
We're not changing it. We're repairing the sidewalk.
Why are we repairing it there, may I ask?
There, um, there's some, um, cracks and, um, there's, it's a, it's a, um, a trip hazard.
Okay, I noticed when they were in there putting machinery in there, that they didn't put any padding, plywood, or anything across that sidewalk. And they took a, uh, for you, well, the back, what you call track hole, track hole, across that sidewalk and I witnessed it being cracked at that time. I don't know who witnessed it or not, but.
Right. Um, Don, if you want to chime in, if you have anything, um, to add?
Yes, ma'am. Before that project started, when we did the demo at the parish house, we noted that there was already significant damage to that sidewalk. There had been root damage, um, there were some heaving and there were some cracking on the existing sidewalk or on the existing blocking there as well. So we didn't require them to do any further protection to it because we went into that project fully intending to go back and replace there that sidewalk there because it was already a tripping hazard.
Okay, that's good enough for me. I just, I saw what happened when it happened.
Yes, sir.
I was curious about that at the time. So thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, I've, I've got a comment for, I've got a question, I guess, for, for Melissa, uh, and it's regarding the, um, Economic Development Grant.
The, the CGBG?
Yeah.
Yes.
My, my question is, what other, what other projects are eligible, were eligible for this grant?
Well, CGBG, um, those grant funds are for infrastructure. We have no infrastructure other than streets and sidewalks. We have, we don't own a water system.
Right.
We own a sewer system. Typically, CGBG is for areas that are of lower income or, um, in need of, um, repair. So, um, Chancellor looked at the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan and used that as a guide, um, when he, when he put the grant in. So as far as additional projects, um, I mean, we, we typically don't have a list. He just used the guidance from this, from the Southwest Cumberland Land Use. I can let him speak to that a little bit more if you, if you have any further questions.
Well, the reason I, the main reason I ask this is, don't we have other areas in town that would qualify for, for sidewalks? I mean, let's see, if.
We do, but I'm not sure they would meet the criteria of CGBG. And Chancellor can answer to that.
If I could just chime in, um, yeah. Southwest has been the guiding document from my department since, uh, I became an employee for the town of Memphis.
Okay.
Uh, economic development, we don't typically do construction projects at all unless it's something directly tied, tied to a sidewalk project. Um, in the last four years, we've received three major, uh, grant awards. The Rockfish Road Sidewalk, the Johnson Street Sidewalk, and the Main Street Sidewalk across from the lake. As it relates to board approval, the FAMPO grants and the NCDOT planning, um, studies that we do, they come with requirements for resolutions of support from the board. So that's why there may appear to have been something where with this particular grant that it didn't seek water approval, it wasn't required. With respect to the previous grant awards, if you notice, Rockfish Road Sidewalk, the Johnson Road Sidewalk tied directly into the Rockfish Road Sidewalk, the Main Street Sidewalk across the lake tied directly into the Johnson Street Sidewalk. Those areas were specifically highlighted and recommended out of the Southwest Plan, uh, in the section where it speaks to making pedestrian-oriented connections that connect the historic, uh, Trade Street area, uh, lake area, um, town hall, mental complex, and the golf course. If you recall, the recent planning study that we just awarded, um, that's where we're possibly trying to explore it. I, I, it's, Orion, it spoke to what Mayor Warner was talking about, where our proposal is possibly to create a greenway that connects the golf course to Trade Street through the same neighborhood that people are concerned about, um, development of the golf course. So all of these orientations and all of these grant awards are tied to the same specific recommendations that I'm governed by. Now, if there's another department like Public Works or like Stormwater or something else, then I think that's where you have a little bit more freedom. But from my standpoint, I'm governed by the recommendation of the adopted plans and studies that have been approved by the board. So, and, and to answer your direct question, I'm not aware of any recommendations to put sidewalks or make pedestrian connections that are outlined in the Southwest Plan that are in other areas outside of the areas that will make these connections to the golf course, uh, Hope Mills Park, Trade Street, and the lake area.
If I can chime in, the other goal of this is to, and with all the programs that are, that are coming down now from the state, is to improve areas that are not only impoverished, but in our case, it's part of historical district. And so if you, if you look at wanting to connect, um, the golf course area, the Trade Street area, and everywhere else to the historical district, that strip of land from, uh, Patterson up to Cross Street, that's one of the areas right now that it would be very costly for us to try to do as a town, but any type of grant we can get to help us, we're hoping that this too would encourage some of the property owners then, uh, to take a look at how their properties look. And the sidewalk's going to make it more, I guess, more noticeable, that the town's trying to help, but they've got to do some help too.
And, and also, uh, chiming back in on, on, on Mayor Warner's, this decision wasn't made in a vacuum. When we first heard about the possibility, and, and this is, I think, um, a time here sent out on recent notice about some additional CGBG funding, but that's tied to a small business, initiative that the county just approved. But if you recall, Mrs. Dolores Taylor comes to the town once a year, um, just to inform us about a community development CGBG, uh, RFP is done aim. Um, last year, we applied for, um, some funding to see if we can actually have one to install in Kings, I think it's Kings Grant, Kingsville. It was just too much money that was needed. So when, when, when I was aware of this grant, I had some extensive conversations with Public Works, because if you recall, we just had the presentation through Don and Bruce with the state of our current roadways, but that's a $35 million budget allocation. And they are typically needing Public Works some, something in the form of a very significant annual allocation over 10 years. So evaluating the grants, I talked to Don, um, if you, I'm not sure if you're aware, but the annual FAMPO grant for 2019 has been delayed because of funding issues at the federal NCDOT. So when this grant award came out, looking at a situation where we didn't have an opportunity to make the 2019 grant application for FAMPO, but I had conversation with Mr. Cisco, where would we put the next actual sidewalk? Should we make a connection in the golf course area? Do we make a connection by T. Wayne Collier? Ellison Street came up. So in the event of trying to get more bang for our buck, it's in the historic district, it still fits within the area that's, that connection at Cross Street is a existing, um, residential neighborhood right there that this leads into. So that was where we kind of leaned, was making this decision, but I don't want you to think that, you know, this wasn't made, um, without some extensive, uh, backdoor conversation that we had with staff.
Well, I, I'm not saying that. I, I guess what I'm trying to, is that there are so many areas in Hope Mills that need sidewalks. I think we all can agree there, so many areas. I think we all can agree there. So many areas. And, and I believe in sidewalks, and I always have believed in sidewalks, and I still believe in them. I just want to know why this, this project on this street was the priority for this grant?
Only way I can, uh, respond to that is reiterate, like I said, under planning and zoning, I take a significant amount of my recommendations on the adopted plans and studies that were approved by the board. Um, if there was a focus on another area, and it was a grant that would be submitted from my standpoint, it'd be a little bit more difficult for me to justify. But I don't have recommendations and plans and studies to reference putting it in another area. Um, could we have found another area? Possibly. Um, but it didn't appear to be, uh, a significant amount of interest in other areas, um, that I was receiving at my level. So, I just basically took it the same way I would do any FAMPO grant, uh, the same way we do pedestrian study. Um, the pedestrian study didn't, uh, necessarily look at a specific area, but we, I looked at the same mandate of making the pedestrian-oriented connections. Because if you recall, the one thing that's missing in all of these four areas, what are we talking about on course? A parking lot.
Right.
We have parking at Town Hall. We have no parking at the lake. Limited parking in the historic area. So, to me, a better, a more prudent approach would be to try to foster pedestrian-oriented connections, which is what's specifically outlined in the Southwest Plan. So, I'm not saying that there were not other areas that you could have possibly focused on, but that has been the priority since I've been doing grants under my department, um, based on the recommendations of the Southwest Plan.
Were other areas given any consideration prior to the final decision for them to go up?
Not any areas that I received any direction on. No.
Okay. All right. Okay.
All right.
It's not that I agree with it, but, okay.
All righty then. All right, the, the next thing we have are reminders, um, and of course, I guess some of these are going to be dependent upon what happens as far as the meetings and stuff, uh, what happens with COVID-19. I do want to just bring a little bit of information to you. We did have the Mayor's Coalition meeting, and one of their, one of the things that they're really concerned about is the census. Uh, they know that, uh, our funding depends and relies on the census data. And right now, the deadline is being extended to October 31st, 2020. And they do and have received money, uh, to assist, uh, with those people that will help with the count. And so they gave us a, a, a lot of information in reference to that. Greg Burns gave us some information, and his information was that we're having an unprecedented, um, loss of funding because of fewer people, um, on the road. He said, "You don't realize it, but the, the gas tax ways that we, we, uh, get monies, that that's all being, uh, changed because fewer people are traveling." He said, "Our, it's going to impact our operational and budget standpoint, um, as far as the monies that DOT is able to, uh, use." Uh, right now, they're estimating the 2020 budget is down $300 million. And that, um, this is more than what the budget was down because of any of the storm damages that we've had. Uh, the 95 Project is continuing, uh, in the areas that the money has already been let. The contracts have been let, but there are things that we did get a report on, the ones that aren't being, um, able to, to do. Amy Cannon spoke, and I did ask Ms. Starling, who is now the Secretary of our Mayor's Coalition, to send you a more detailed, uh, when she sends the minutes out. She can send those to our commissioners also. But they're projecting that our property tax, uh, is going to be, um, lower. There's a wide range of predictions, um, and that's because the way that things are being done, uh, you know, you're, they're, they're postponing things. So, the money that we would actually get within this fiscal year, it might be that it will be next year. For instance, the delayed payment of motor vehicle tax, March, April, May, and June are being delayed, which means that, that money would be moved to next year. So, they're just, they gave us some things that they want us to consider for cash flow issues. And the fact that sales tax, right now, there's a big reduction because the number of businesses that aren't there, uh, actually receiving any sales tax. We, we haven't seen that impact yet, but we know that it's, it's probably going to come. Uh, and they're again saying that they're, they don't know what to predict right now. Uh, they did have someone there to talk about, uh, the community fund, foundation funds. There are some funds available under, they're called unrestricted endowments and field of interest endowments that you, we can apply for. And those things would be like endowments for the arts, uh, and things like that. It would be, uh, more interesting, more interest kinds of things, uh, like the historical, um, commission and, and areas like that. It could request small grants up to, um, $10,000, $20,000 grant. So, we're going to try to get all that information, so there might be some ways we can use that. The only other thing that they, uh, talked about was that this, um, right now that we're having, uh, is actually affecting econ- economic development. And Robert Van Gheen spoke to the fact that, you know, there's, um, everything's slowed down, and it's slowed down because a lot of contacts that you normally made, you couldn't make. Uh, and again, they talked and gave us an update from Cacti Valley Hospital about the number of cases of, of COVID-19. And I understand that today, we've added 33 additional cases. So, our numbers are, are not going down as quickly as we thought. Um, so I don't know what that's going to entail. But that was basically the Mayor's Coalition, very good meeting. And we did it by Zoom also, and we did have, uh, people from, uh, the hospital, from EMS, um, from Department of Transportation, and again, the Federal City and all the, uh, Commonwealth County Commissioners. Uh, next, staff comments. Uh, do we have anything more, uh, Ms. Starling?
No, ma'am, not for me.
And thank you for everything you do. We, we celebrate you this week from a distance.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Jane. Thank you, Tiffany.
Yes, thanks, Tiffany, too.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I actually, my wife, real breaker. And I haven't leave the meeting for a little bit.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Adams, do you have anything more?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not.
Mr. Hartsock?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, official comments. I'll start. Do you have anything more, Commissioner Legg?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I want to hope that each and every one of you are safe and well and, uh, taking all your safety precautions. Uh, we took a trip last week, and every time we went somewhere other than my brother's house, we donned a mask and had our, uh, gloves and our hand sanitizer. And, uh, it worked out really well for us. Um, I'd like to thank each and every one of our, our staff members and our, our town employees who are getting out and doing their jobs. Uh, each and every one of you are to be commended, and you are all my heroes. Not just at the hospital, but the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Public Works Department. Uh, Mr. Reeves and his crew has to go out and meet these contractors. Uh, each and every one of you are all my heroes. And Mr. Marley, you're to top it with, sir, with the job that you have to do every day. And Marco, I know you get tired of answering questions a bit, but it'll come. I saw something in there a while ago that said, "When we get back to normal." "I don't want to be back to normal. I want to be better than we were when this pandemic come by and pay us a visit." "I want to be better than we were." So, with that being said, I hope I'm not missing anything. If I did, I apologize. Again, I want to thank, uh, Bruce and, and Don for meeting us today at the golf course. And, uh, Chancellor, I don't know who you tried to call me back today or not. I don't know. I missed it, but you did.
Hey, Commissioner Bellflowers, we actually, uh, did approve everything, uh, today with that, um, piece. Um, I just didn't have a chance to email you back, but I did contact Home on to let them know.
Okay, well, thank you. I, I was on my alarm once afternoon, so I had no way. No, and I couldn't hear my phone. Thank you very much. Uh, that's it from me, Madam Mayor. Uh, each and every one of you be safe. Don't forget our National Day of Prayer. Uh, I don't really miss these, but I still won't miss this one. I'll just have to do it another way. And God bless each and every one of you. And all you residents are fighting to be the same as we are. We want to be back to better than normal. And Drew gets a frown off to the face saying to get better. That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Marley? Commissioner, you have any comment?
He's blocked.
Hello?
You have any comments, sir?
Yes, ma'am. I usually don't have any, but, um, I wanted to thank Commissioner Legg for his comments to me. Um, I appreciate that. Um, there's a lot more out there that's doing a whole lot more than I am. But, uh, I want to echo what he said about our employees that are on the front line working every day. Um, it's a struggle, and, uh, and I'm with them every day on that. Um, I just had a couple of comments, and not to beat a dead horse, that, um, one was about the golf course, the parking lot. Uh, I was kind of mixed on that. I, I wanted to touch back on what, uh, on what the mayor said about the, the revenues and the taxes. And we don't really know what effect this is going to have, what kind of trickle-down effect it's going to have on us. Um, but at the same time, I, I, I felt like it was important. I actually got a few phone calls from some people. Kind of surprised them, because they usually don't get those, uh, calls, um, of people in support of it. Um, I decided to support it, so I, I just hope we made the right decision on that. Um, the other comment I had was just about the sidewalk, uh, the grant for the sidewalks. Um, I think that's a good thing. Uh, I don't know if a lot of people realize it or not, but with the addition of that sidewalk along Ellison Street, with the exception of a portion of Edwin Diva, um, when the Johnson Street and the Rockfish Road Sidewalk project is completed and the Ellison Street, you can actually almost walk from Hope Mills Middle School on the sidewalk there along where the Exile Station is, and cross Main Street by the CBS, uh, take a short trip down Edwin Diva and hit the sidewalk at William Bill Luther. And you'll be able to go from William Bill Luther all the way to Rockfish Elementary School on a sidewalk. And, um, and that's outstanding to me. Um, but, uh, but I just wanted to make that comment. And, um, another thing was, um, and I guess this is for the, the town manager. Um, and I don't know if anything can be done about it. Some of my neighbors over here, and I've experienced it as well, all hours of the day and night, um, and the traffic's getting a whole lot heavier with four-wheelers and dirt bikes and, um, cut through traffic with these vehicles. I actually came home today, um, when I got off work, I came home today, and I made the turn off of, um, Edwin Diva onto William Bill Luther. And, uh, there was two kids on four-wheelers, and when they seen my vehicle, because it looks like a, uh, police vehicle, they made a quick U-turn, and, and, I mean, they were getting it down William Bill Luther, running from me. I guess they thought I was a cop. Um, so, I don't know if anything can be done with that. I don't know if maybe patrols or, you know, maybe try to deter that traffic. I don't, I guess they're cutting through the backside of the neighborhood along the railroad tracks. Maybe, I, I haven't been back there. I don't know where they're going. But I know the gunfire is getting worse, getting louder. Um, I know there's no way to control that really, but, um, you know, just the traffic. I know some of my neighbors here in my neighborhood have approached me about it. And I told them that I would make mention of it at the meeting tonight, so I wanted to keep my word.
Yes.
And, um, and I thank you all for your time, and I've enjoyed these Zoom meetings. And, um, it's, it's a different day and time, and, uh, we just got to adapt. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, ma'am. I, I do not like this Zoom myself, but I'm from the old, I'm not that techie anyway. I miss seeing our staff and, and town people and seeing them one-on-one. I really do miss that. I want to thank Jane and Tiffany, Jane, excuse me, and Tiffany for all the work that they've done. You've done a wonderful job keeping us informed of what's going on. And of course, the staff, all of them know how much they're appreciated by the town, Fire Department, Police Department, um, all the staff. And, um, I just miss it. Be safe. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Bellflowers?
Just want everybody to be safe, and I thank all of our town employees for everything they do for the citizens. Um, and just take care of each other. We're almost there. Uh, we'll, we'll be there soon, and hopefully we'll be there safely, and, and we'll be back to our normal routine.
Thank you. Mayor Per Tim McCray?
I would just like to piggyback off of a lot of things that you all have already said. Um, would like to thank Jane and Tiffany this week with, um, Minnesota's Clunk Week. Um, I would also personally like to thank the police officers who have been diligent with bringing us our packets and our budget retreat, um, notebooks. They don't have to do that. I'm sure they have their hands full with a lot of other things. So, I'd like to personally thank them for doing that for us. Um, we did, I did have an Air Quality Stakeholders Virtual Meeting in April. And the only thing that I wanted to say about that is this week is, um, this week is Air Quality Awareness Week, and there's a theme centered around each day. There can be more information found on the FAMPO website, and there's also a lot of educational pieces, um, and things for parents to do with their children while they're home, while we're all homeschooling. And, um, other than that, again, I would just like to thank everybody and continue to, um, encourage everybody to support our small businesses who are the heartbeat of our communities, who are struggling during this time and really didn't get a lot of the federal help that a lot of some of these other big businesses got. And also, um, the Police Department, Fire Department, the people that work in the hospitals, but also these people that continue to go work in grocery stores, fast food, um, industries. Um, they continue to put their lives on the line every day for us as well. So, I'd just like to thank everybody in our community and remind everybody to be safe. And I miss you all too, but I want to be around you when it's safe. So, thank you.
And I would like to let you know that Sally Bailey and Greeley Mitchell, uh, we met with them last week. I did send all the commissioners a, a message in reference to that. They are going to, they're raising money, and what they're going to do is host our, uh, people that have been working, the boots on the ground, the police, the fire, the public works, parks and rec people, uh, the people that have actually had to, had to be there and, and be out, uh, and, and get, you know, get closer to the, the citizens of Hope Mills. They're planning on serving, uh, dinner on May 8th, and they're going to try to do it between shifts. That what would happen is the ones getting ready to go home would be fed supper, and the ones coming in would be fed, uh, supper also. And the way they're going to plan on doing that is, they've got Bruce and Mickey's, um, Chef Lynn, Big T, uh, Little Caesar's, and Marcy's that are going to, the food will be prepackaged, and what they'll do is try to set it up so that everybody be six feet apart if they, uh, stay on the grounds and eat. Uh, but just an opportunity to let them know that we appreciate everything they've done. Um, the, any funds that have been collected are turned into Town Hall. So, if any of you that haven't would like to donate, um, we're paying those people that have agreed to, to provide the food. We've asked them, they, originally, they wanted to do it for free. But all of those businesses are struggling. Again, it's because of the way things are. So, we felt like, um, you know, especially Bruce, from Bruce and Mickey's, he was, um, we were very concerned. He wanted to give us anything we wanted, but we felt like he's had the hard time, uh, over on Legion Road. So, again, this will be May 8th, and I know that Sally and, uh, Greeley will get with Melissa tomorrow and do the specifics so that they can let the, uh, staff know what's going on. But again, we all appreciate what they've done, and we know that, um, like tonight, they're here on Zoom, but they go to work every day. And that's something that, um, many people have not been required to do because they're letting people work from home. Uh, with that being said, is there any, any other comments that are? Uh, with that being said, is there any, any other comments that are for the good of the, of the team?
Just keep up the good work, guys. Melissa, you're doing a fantastic job with that staff you have down there. And with Don and Chancellor and Lamarcus and Drew, the whole crew, uh, not to leave out our clerk. Thank you to you, all your assistance is well.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Legg, and, and I couldn't do it without the staff that I have. So, they make it, they're the ones that make it, they're the ones that make it possible, and they're the ones that make me look good, so.
Alright.
Hard times on our job as well. Uh, and you and the staff down there, and you as well, Dan, thank you.
Yes. Alrighty, do we have a, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, then I'll say goodnight, and we'll see you, uh, soon.
Goodnight, God bless.
Thank you.